Good evening and welcome to the December 14th, 2022 meeting of the Anacortes Planning Commission. We'll do a roll call. I see Ms. Ruther is not present and Mr. Graff are not present. I understand Mr. Graff is out of town. We do have a quorum, so we will proceed. Let's see, has everybody had a chance to review the draft minutes of October 26th? Any changes? Nothing being heard, well, those will be accepted. New business tonight is a public hearing for a conditional use permit 2022-0005 Morrison Court Bed and Breakfast. A note that we will not resolve the, resolve or vote on the proposal tonight. There's a legal requirement for a 21-day notice, so we will see the presentation, accept public comment, and have a commission discussion, and then continue the meeting until January 11th, our next meeting, before we take any action. Apparently, written comments are still invited until December 21st, and on the 11th, if there are any last-minute oral presentations, we will consider those. Ms. Baller, do you have a presentation for us?
Thank you, and thank you for clarifying the next steps and that we'll have to continue this public hearing. I would also like to clarify one other thing you might have noticed in the staff report on the first page. There are a couple of January dates that have a typo. They say 2022. Of course, that will be fixed in the final staff report. Those are January dates 2023.
Oh, and I was getting ready to jump in the Wayback Machine.
All right, so this is the pre-decision, open record, public hearing for Project CUP 2022-005, a conditional use permit to establish an owner occupied and owner operated single sleeping room bed and breakfast within an existing residence. This presentation is a quick overview of information found in the staff report. The property is in the residential low-density II zone, R2, and as I said, a bed and breakfast is the proposal, which equals a conditional use review process. The address is 2812 Morrison Court, and there are no proposed construction or improvements to the site or the structure included in this request. We have, or excuse me, establishing a bed and breakfast in a low-density or medium-density residential zone requires a conditional use permit. Under AMC 1941, all short-term lodging rentals, meaning anything less than 30 days, are grouped under overnight lodging category, and all overnight lodging types except for bed and breakfasts are prohibited in residential zones. A conditional use process is a type four, which is a city council decision. These level of reviews require a pre-application conference with city staff, a pre-application neighborhood meeting, a notice of application, 21-day comment period, we're currently day 14 of that 21-day, city department review, and then we are now at the pre-decision, open record, public hearing phase, and it will end with a closed-record decision by city Requirements of operating a bed and breakfast anywhere within city limits are the same. The owner must be the operator of the facility and must reside on the premises. All sleeping rooms, including the owners as well as the guests, must be within the main residential building. In residential zones, it is required that the property have no outward appearance of a business, and parking must meet the standards of AMC 19.64, which state that two parking spaces are required for the single-family residents and one parking space per guest room, all provided on-site. Here we have a vicinity map. Subject property is outlined in a red box, and I outlined Morrison Court with a blue line, so you can see here that the property is accessed via Morrison Court by way of Sunset Avenue. And the surrounding neighborhood use and zone is single-family. Here we have zoning map layers, so largely surrounded by the same zone it is in, and you can see the proximity between a couple of other zones in the immediate area. We have the applicant's submitted site plan here. Morrison Court is a dead-end street, and the subject property is located on the west side of the dead end and is developed with a two-car attached garage, surface parking, and of course, the residence itself. You can see here that the submitted site plan shows a total of four designated parking spaces will be provided on-site, two located in the attached garage, which will be used by the owner, and two surface parking spaces located east of the garage on an existing gravel parking area. Please note, though, as just previously stated, code's minimum requirements would only require three parking spaces, but the applicant has chosen to provide one additional space in case the guests are not able to arrive together and need two parking spaces. Those will be provided on-site. In order to grant a conditional use permit, the decision-maker must find that the use would be consistent with the CUP criteria, and it is of staff's opinion that the applicant has demonstrated that they can and will meet all criteria and standards for approval. So to conclude here, we just have again, for the public online and for record, that we will continue this hearing January 11th, and the closed decision hearing with city council is scheduled for January 23rd, 2023. And I'm happy to answer any questions, make any clarifications based on the staff report or anything that the commissioners may have at this time.
Thank you, Ms. Chair, and thank you for the presentation. Appreciate it. I had just one question from page six, and it talks about findings of fact, and you mentioned the outward appearance of a business.
I'm sorry?
The outward appearance of a business is mentioned in there. I didn't see anything in the pack. Does the applicant intend to have any signage?
No.
Okay, thank you.
No signage.
Right, are there any other questions from the commissioners? Okay, at this point, we'll open the public comment period for this request. Is there anyone who has a comment to make to the commission? None being heard, we will continue this comment until the next meeting on January 11th. And is there any, any discussion by the commissioners at this point?
Does the health department, because I assume that it's a bed and breakfast, they're going to be serving food, does the health department check the kitchen, the refrigeration, and does the fire department have any special inspections they do for sleeping areas?
It is my understanding that the fire department will do an inspection to ensure working smoke alarms and fire extinguishers are present. It is, I am not aware that the health department has any requirements.
Thank you.
All right, anything else? Then we will close out this item for today and resume it on January 11th. Moving on to old business, I want to give a brief agenda for this, for this item. As a chair, I wanted, I wanted to spend a few minutes just recapping how we got here, give a little bit of history on the, on the, on this issue. At that point, we will have a staff presentation, which will be a review of, largely a review of previous material that we've looked at. We will open this for public comment, and again, that will be, that hearing portion of the meeting will be continued until January 11th, where we can take any further comment. And let's see, following the, the public comment section, we're going to do a quick go-around with the commissioners to see if they have any questions or clarifications for, for the planning staff, and then a brief discussion, just sort of taking the temperature of the commission about where we're going with this, so that we can give some direction to the, to the planning staff about next steps. No action will be taken tonight, and as I said, the meeting will be continued to January 11th. So just a few minutes, if you'll indulge me on, for those who are watching and those who are present. The issue of the bonus height allowance in the R4 zone was, was proposed during the process of a large-scale revamp of the development guidelines, of the development code for the city. This followed a long process for developing the comprehensive plan, which then guided the recommendations that were placed before the commission for the zoning. I understand there were literally dozens of public meetings over a number of years for the comprehensive plan, and then during the review of the, of the changes in the zoning and pla, and planning regulations, the, this commission spent about two years reviewing materials and examining the various issues. So it was a very comprehensive look, and there was plenty of opportunity for public input. I'm, I'm going to speak a little bit to how the fifth story or the bonus height was included in the R4 zone. When we were, as a planning commission, we were tasked with looking at how the vision in the, in the comprehensive plan could be realized, and we were talking about the housing In the process of reviewing the zoning, zoning for the various areas of the city, the planning commission at that time, and some of us were present, some not, the planning commission had the opportunity to talk to some developers, some, some building owners and some residents about how, what kind of things impacted the market and the avail, availability of housing in this area. The, the bonus height, the bonus height option was originally considered, I believe, for the central business district only at the time, strictly in terms of the, of the smaller units and the, and/or the low-income housing. There was another bonus height, bonus height issue for the mixed marine use, where the MJB property is, and that was unrelated to the, the housing bonus height restrictions. It had a different set of incentives. When we were examining the availability of, of housing and what, what the trends were, one of the questions that came up was what, what function of, there was a longstanding height limit of 40 feet in the R4 zone, and the question was, was, the original proposal was for a bonus height of a fifth floor or an extra 10 feet for, not, for low-income housing. The question came up, what is, what was the probability of low-income housing getting built and adding actually to the, the housing stock in the area? And based on feedback that we got from developers and people involved in the housing market, there was very little possibility of those kind of projects being built, except insofar as some charitable contribution would be made towards the building of a project. In other words, the, the incentive wasn't going to really achieve the goals that had been set out in the comprehensive plan, as the commission determined. We did see the option of the fifth-floor allowance for small units, and inquired as to the likelihood of that making a significant dent in the housing issue. Based on what we were told at the time, the, the, and as I think Mr. Meesmer's presentation will reinforce, a four, a 40-foot building gets you into four stories where the last story makes it a, basically, a very expensive building to build. A fifth floor has incrementally lower costs to add, and a, the projects that were, we were looking at and that we were discussing with, with the people in the building industry suggested that a fifth story would make these programs or projects more like, more likely to occur. This met the, this would help meet the goal for housing, for additional housing, and since then, of course, we've seen all kinds of studies, and they all say, we need more housing here. So the, the commission at that time recommended to the city council that the bonus height option for the R4 zone also include the small unit option that had been originally proposed for the central business district. It seemed to be consistent with the financial incentives and with the outcomes that were desired and postulated in the comprehensive plan. The city council had the final, as, as with all of our recommendations, the city council had the final review and final decision to make, and they approved that recommendation. So this is how we ended up with this, with the fifth-floor option being made available in the R4 zone. It was consistent with the comprehensive plan, it was consistent with the dense zoning that the R4 was supposed to maintain, and it was consistent with the growth in, in housing units available in the city. So since then, because of some pushback, the city council put a moratorium on this study or on the, on the development, and we have been looking at it for over two years. Frankly, I'm not real happy about the delay. I suspect some of the people who had projects in mind are not either, but here we are, and now we're going to see what kind of recommendations the commission comes up with, whether the policy should be changed or not. Mr. Meesmer?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, commissioners. This is a very good summary. Thank you. Just add a, a couple of things, you know, when we talk about the comprehensive plan, 2016 comprehensive plan, that was a very extensive process. City of Anacortes won the Governor's Award for public involvement in that process. It was a massive undertaking, and the development regulations, as the chair mentioned, took approximately two years with just as extensive public process. So with that, I do have a few slides for us I'd like to start in on. And there we go. Okay, so this is a use zone map that shows in blue outline the R4 use zone. You'll see Commercial Avenue here in the middle, so to speak. That's all commercial zoning there, R4 over here, and then the hospital overlay zone over the R4, R4 on the east side of Commercial Avenue as well. Bonus height incentives. So this slide just, it talks about the areas where it's allowed, with the exception of marine mixed use zones, this is the R4, the commercial and central business district. You have the small units option, which requires 25% of the total dwelling units, not more than 600 square feet, and then the affordable units option. We haven't had anybody talk with us about the affordable units option, yet we have had one building that was constructed with the small units, meeting the requirements. That building was leased out, I think, within three months, the, the entire building. So this is the concept for the bonus height provisions. And I guess, you know, why are we, why are we trying to build more units? That's to accommodate the growth in population between now and 2036. You know, we're looking at, in 2036, population projection of 22,293. We're currently 17,800, I think it is, 17,880. And so, you know, we're looking at a total of 2,260 dwelling units, and right now, we're just not getting the multifamily, and if you look at this bonus height provision and the fact that as you go beyond that fourth floor, the costs become, I would say, that they're readily, they're easier to hit your goals as a developer, whether or not you can make it pencil or not. And we've heard that through various meetings that we've had here before the commission and the city council in the past. Again, empty, it implements the key comp plan land use and housing goals. We've changed several zone designations for the comprehensive plan to allow more density. We have new standards in housing types, expanded provisions for ADUs, new site and building design standards, and our parking code updates actually bring the number of parking spaces more into alignment with actual parking demand, and then new affordable housing provisions and bonus incentives, again, bonus height incentives. So this talks about the residential high-density zone, and again, gives you more, more look at exactly where we're talking about. So this area, this R4 area here is currently where the moratorium is in place on. That's the air four, air four area west of Commercial Avenue. The base height is 40 feet. The maximum you'd be able to go with the bonus height for the main portion of the building is 50 feet, and then elevator shafts or mechanical equipment could go another 10 feet beyond that, so not a 65-foot building. The history, so the area between 10th and 22nd has been designated RH or R4 residential high-density since 1978. The form and intensity standards and permitted uses have been adjusted over time. 1994, that maximum height was 35 and 50 for non-residential space, and 2008, that changed to a maximum height of 40 feet throughout. So this talks about the base heights in, in various areas, and again, that R4 is here with a 40-foot base, 50-foot with the bonus height, commercial 40 and 50, so the area right next to the R4 is the same as the R4 right now, R4 here, 40 and 50. The medical overlay is up to 60-foot, and then the MMU over here is 35 to 65-foot with the bonus height. So these are the concepts that the city council asked staff to bring before the planning commission, and you all saw these back in, I think it was September. And what we've done is gone through, listed out each concept, and then we have maps that go along with each concept as well in your packet. So this is, you know, concept A, talks about rezoning the half-block between commercial, between the commercial zone and O Avenue from R4 to commercial, so, you know, and that, there's a half-block, and we don't normally see split zoning in a block like that, but in Anacortes, we have several areas that are like that, so that's one option. Concept B, modify the applicability of the bonus site provisions to only apply to R4 east of O Avenue. Modify the applicability of provisions to terminate at the east side of N Avenue, so that's one more block west. Do not allow roof decks. There's been some concern about roof decks and how folks on the roof decks could look into other people's homes, I guess. Concept E, do some, some type of building step backs, which can be complicated in construction and could be expensive. Concept F is to leave the bonus height provisions in place with no changes. G, a combination of concepts, so you could remove a portion of it from the eligibility and change a part of it to commercial, so like from N Avenue West, you could remove that and then change that from O Avenue to the east to commercial. And so the Housing Action Plan is, is right now going through the process with city council. In fact, we'll be making a presentation to city council on the 19th for that. And what you will find in your packet is a memo from Makers Architecture, who is a consultant working with city staff on that Housing Action Plan, and it talks about the medium home sales price of 706,000-plus and the income for that, 167, and the median income is about 83,592. What it basically says, Anacortes' vacancy rate is, is so low that there isn't much out there for folks to live in, so it makes it difficult to, I mean, market-rate housing right now, there are several out on the market, as you know, but for those folks who are looking for worker housing, pretty difficult to find. Concepts for discussion, so I've, I've got this slide out here with, I think, all the two concepts on it, but it will get us started. I'll go back to that. I also have before you all the concepts on one sheet, and we can go through each of those and have a conversation, and perhaps, though, at this time, it would be good to take some public comments, since it is a public hearing.
Thank you, Mr. Meesmer. We're going to open up the meeting for public comment. Is there anyone here who would like to speak about this topic? Okay, none being heard. We will continue the public comment period to January 11th. People have the opportunity to speak then, and there's also the opportunity for people to send in written comments, and I can't remember the final, the end date for those.
Well, actually, the written comment ended today, but folks will be able to provide verbal comment at the January 11 meeting. And so I, I think what staff is hoping for this evening is, the commissioners don't need to take a vote, but it would be great if the commissioners were to give staff direction on which concept you'd like to move forward with, then staff can develop whatever's needed for our potential language for the recommendation of city council and bring that back on January 11.
So I think that's appropriate that we kind of take the temperature of the group. First, I would like to do a quick go-around and see if any of the commissioners have questions. Mr. Curtis?
Thank you, Ms. Chair. Thank you, Mr. Meesmer, for that presentation. I just had a couple of questions to clarify some of the things that I've read and then based on your presentation, so these may be... So these may be softballs for you. I hope they are. In the Chair's presentation, I think I heard you say there's, it costs more to build a four-story building than a five-story building. Can you discuss a little bit of some of the factors that make that so, to the extent that you know?
I had cut some of my slides out from our presentation in September, so if you give me a second, I can pull up that actual slide for us.
Actually, while you're pulling that up, this is probably a softball for you. The 40-foot limit with the 50-foot bonus, how high, what's the highest physical feature on that structure allowed to be?
Mr. Curtis, to clarify what I said, the building up to three stories is done with one set of regulations regarding the construction methods and so on. The fourth story requires more in the way of commercial costs, commercial electrical, commercial plumbing, and requires an elevator. So there's a big jump in cost between three stories and four stories. And then the fifth story does not have a huge jump in cost because it's pretty much the same as the requirements for four stories. And that's the extent of my knowledge. Mr. Miesmer will know a lot more.
So I've got the slide up for you here. And we got this information from two or three different developers. And in general, as it mentions here, multi-story housing benefits from economics of scale. The bigger and taller the building, the cheaper it should be by the square foot. This is true up through about the third floor, and at four floors, additional factors increase that versus three, but only increase incrementally to a smaller extent when a fifth level is added. And so when you hit that fourth story, you're looking at an elevator, and the numbers on this are a little bit off right now. 100,000 is like double that. Elevators are now going around 200,000. So, you know, you put that elevator in, now you've got a fifth floor, that economy of scale comes down quite a bit.
Thank you very much, and that was the reason I asked the question, was that makes perfect sense, and I want to make sure that the public had an opportunity to kind of hear the economics of it, and that they weren't just heights and numbers that were pulled out of the sky.
And you had a second question?
I did, thank you. In the R4 zone, the 40-foot limit with the 50-foot bonus height, what's the highest physical feature that can be allowed on that?
I'm sorry, one more time, what's the highest building?
So if I have a 40-foot limit within the R4 zone, but I am allowed up to 50 feet with the bonus height?
That's correct.
What's the actual, no kidding, how high is the most high physical feature of that building? Is it 50 feet?
So the main roof is 50 feet, and then our code allows for an additional 10 feet for mechanical equipment and the elevator shaft.
Right, so when there's a...
So that one would be approximately 60.
Right. But I just want to make sure, it seems like there's a lot of conflating concerns about the R4 zone and the MJD project in a lot of the public comment, and I just wanted to make sure that everybody who's either watching or here understands the differences in those two ideas.
So the MJB area with the bonus height provisions would be allowed to go up to 65 feet, but not in the R4 zone.
That's exactly the point, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Villanueva, any questions?
My question deals with our goal for affordable housing within the community. The R4 zone and with the bonus, how does that affect affordability, not just in construction costs, but when I looked at the original proposal, we also did a size restriction in order to create a more affordable unit within that building? And can you speak to that issue of affordability?
A great question and a very difficult question. The city has no authority to, of course, tell a contractor that they're going to build affordable housing. We can give people options to do that. If a developer wants to build affordable housing, they have the option of being able to, the city has the option of waiving impact fees and general facilities charges. So if someone's building a 28-unit apartment building and the impact fees and GFCs are 200,000, city can waive that. So most of the developers like that, but we haven't had anybody bite on that yet. We've had a few folks bite on smaller projects, not very large. The housing, the Anacortes Housing Action Plan that we're distributing now and that you all saw about two months ago, I think, the first draft or second draft, BAT has recommendations on ways to achieve more housing and more varieties that could lead to affordability for folks. Other than that, the city really doesn't have many tools that we can use that the state would allow us to use, other than changing our zoning, for instance, to allow outright duplexes and triplexes in certain areas, which right now I think we allow triplexes in our R4 use zone, but maybe that might be the R2 use zone. I hope that helps.
Very much so, thank you. One last, which may be considered a frivolous question, but so many of the comments deal with looking into people's yards. Do we have a fence ordinance that requires a six-foot, eight-foot fence so I can't see into my neighbor's yard and they can't see into mine? It seems to be a theme that runs through many of the comments, that it seems to only apply to this project, this zone, but not to any other part of the city.
There are no requirements for fencing. Fencing is entirely voluntary, and maximum height of the fence in the front yard within the front yard setback is 42 inches, and the side yard is seven feet.
Thank you.
Mr. Shuretsky, any questions?
Couple of questions, a couple of comments. Supply and demand is going to be the trigger. I mean, many of these letters, besides having an incorrect number on the footage, talk about, you know, making Anacortes look like San Francisco or someplace. Supply and demand are going to, builders aren't going to build it if they can't rent it. And so one or two buildings may tell future investors that they really don't want to spend that kind of money and have empty units or have to make huge concessions. So again, when the buildings sit empty, there won't be any more for a little while. The elevator shaft proportionally, how much square, again, it can go up a little higher, but it's a small part of the top of that building, correct?
Right, right. It's typically not more than 10 by 10, 12 by 12.
On that massive building that everybody's all worried about. What are the parking requirements for these buildings? Offsite, onsite, I'm sorry?
Yeah, you know, it's based on the size of the units as far as number of bedrooms in the unit. For instance, that 600-square-foot, one-bedroom unit is going to require, like, I think, one parking space.
And the two bedrooms would be one and a half or two?
One and a half to two, yeah.
Okay. I guess my point is that these buildings are not going to fill up the entire lot?
No.
Okay. Again, the visual that some of these comments make, it could sound like that's what we're going to have, is, you know, 20-foot, 20 feet between buildings and whatever, and that's just not going to happen.
Right, and the concept is, when you look at the R4 zone, you know, it's close to the commercial zone, close to walking distance for pretty much everything. The idea is to start getting people out of their cars and have them walk. And so a lot of the folks that move into some of these buildings, you know, they don't even have cars. They might have a bicycle, though. And our code was revised in 2019 to require bike spaces in every multifamily building.
Thank you.
So I'm just thinking, so if one of the main goals is to provide affordable housing for the residents who are here now and those that are in the future, how do we define affordable housing? Is it strictly by percent of income spent?
So HUD defines it as 30% of the 80% of AMI, adjusted median income. I think Anacortes' adjusted median income was around 60-some thousand, so 30% of that. And it's actually in our code. I'm afraid I don't have it here, but it's defined in our code. And if a developer wants to do the affordable housing, they have to sign a covenant and have it recorded with the property, that they will continue to rent or sell within those guidelines.
So then, just following up, just thinking out loud, again, if our goal is really to provide more affordable housing, how successful are we with that goal? And then are there other options that are out there that could help us to reach the goal more quickly, more efficiently, and still maintain what I feel is the quality of life in Anacortes?
Good question. So we, the city, is currently working with the Anacortes Housing Authority in putting together approximately, I'm going to say 30 units of affordable housing, and those would be truly affordable housing. Funding is very difficult to find. Right now, that's kind of the barrier for them. With what's going on with the bonus height, the two programs, the affordable housing units and the small units, a 600-square-foot unit's going to go for a lot less than a 1,200-square-foot unit. So that option alone, as a market rate rental or lease rate, is less than what you're going to find for those 1,200-square-foot units. And so the concept there is because it's smaller, it'll be less expensive, which we have found with the one building that's been built. But the other things that we're doing, again, the Housing Action Plan, that's coming before Council for adoption soon, will have other options. One is what's called multifamily tax exemption program, which will incentivize builders to build more units, and therefore, as you have more units on the market, then the prices come down on the rents on those. Where you don't have very many units on the market, prices go up. So, you know, that's one concept as well. But the Housing Action Plan has any number of items that will help encourage affordable housing in different varieties, so. But we haven't adopted that. Once that's adopted by Council, Council then will direct staff to look at what needs to be amended in the comprehensive plan and the development regulations to implement it.
Mr. Miesmer, I have a follow-up question on that.
Absolutely.
And that is, our projections are, reality is that we're doing approximately 101 units a year, according to the document. Our need is 131 units per year. Question is, how far are we, what is the current deficit between those two numbers? How far in the hole are we, are behind meeting our targets? And is that going to be impacting our growth management policies and the issues associated there?
Good question, Mr. Villanueva. So we're considerably behind. This year, I think for units, we're going to be somewhere around 80 by the end of the year. We are right now lacking, on a yearly basis for the past, I'm going to say, three years, COVID didn't help very much at all, probably close to 35, 40 units a year behind. That will not impact our, anything to do with growth management. You know, what it means is, what's happening right now with our Housing Action Plan in that we need to amend our comprehensive plan and development regulations to encourage more units, more units to be constructed in town. I have to admit that I think that the Council and the Planning Commission did a great job with our updated development regulations in 2019. You know, that encouraged numbers in a variety of housing units that the city hasn't seen before. Cottage units and accessory dwelling units have soared over the past couple of years, and townhouses. This year alone, we've had approximately 30 townhouses go in, and I can't remember the last time we've had that many townhouses go in in one year. It's making a difference. We're going to have to take a step to make another difference.
Thank you.
A follow-up question to follow up on Dr. Martin's question. The, I think the term that was used at the Housing Action Plan meeting a few weeks ago was tenure, and I think that refers to how long an individual, an owner stays, how long an owner stays in a property. I think that was defined as tenure in one of the briefs on the presentations. To follow up on Dr. Martin's question, if you increase the supply of dwellings, whether they're in multi-story, multifamily, or you find more dirt to build on, do you have any indication from any of the surveys that the city has conducted, that you would see a appreciable number of retirees or senior citizens downsize into these? Or, and I think a little bit to Dr. Martin's concern, or are you just going to be building more units for more people from out of town to come into and not really address the problem?
I like that question. I think it's a fact that folks are going to be downsizing, but it's also a fact that we're not going to put a gate on the bridge. And so what's happening is, is we do have folks that want to live here and can't live here because demand has gone beyond supply for many years. And we've seen that in the median house price in Anacortes right now. We've had a couple of buildings that have just come online, and they're actually open for lease right now, so that's a good, that's a good sign that we're seeing. But we'll have to see how the economy goes and what's coming up. I've had a couple of developers approach me about doing some apartment buildings, not five-story buildings, just apartment buildings. We have some duplexes that are going in and more townhouses that are coming up. So that's going to help with the supply. Definitely, we're seeing folks coming to town.
Is it safe to presume, then, that if there is nowhere, if there are no options for people looking to downsize, then they're likely to stay where they are? And if they stay where they are, then that's not doing anything to affect affordable housing for people looking to move here? Is that a safe assumption?
I think so.
Thank you.
I had a comment that I wanted to double-check with you. One of the things that came up during the discussions for the 2019 development code change, when we talked about affordability housing, this may address some of your questions. The question was affordable for who? So there was, the terminology for affordable housing was specifically related to people with low income, and it specifically was related to housing that was subsidized in some fashion, whether through the construction process or the rents being charged or whatever. The flip side of that was the single-family residences and the demand that was driving costs considerably higher even back then. And now, if I understood the study, the average house cost in this city is now sale of 700,000 and up, and yet the median income person would qualify for a $350,000 purchase? So I think this really, really points to where are the medium, where are the medium houses? And there aren't very many. Now, there are some being built, like the cottages and townhouses, but as I've, from what I've observed, even those are relatively expensive. So this leaves us with what kind of rental housing could be built that is going to actually be affordable for someone who has a job here but isn't, but doesn't have a $150,000-a-year income? And so the, it's a, at that point, it becomes strictly a matter of supply and demand. We, the, in the housing study, they said our current vacancy rental rate is approximately 1.9%. So this talks about the churn in housing and how many, how many units are going to be visible for rent at any given time. The natural rate was described as where there's equilibrium between supply and demand is more like 5%. So this tells me that we are 3% in the hole right from the beginning on having enough housing in this city, before you even start looking at any increase in demand, which I would not be surprised to see, because these, there's a lot of, a lot of move out of the big cities into smaller towns for equality of life. big cities into smaller towns for equality of life, because it's possible to do that and work. And so I, I think the, the discussion by the planning commission in 19 was what tools are available to actually make houses not officially affordable, but houses that can be afforded by somebody who isn't making a bunch of money? And most of the time, that, these are starter residences in apartments, one-bedroom, two-bedroom apartments, and as the person builds their income or builds their family or builds their equity, then they become a house purchaser. But in the meantime, there's nothing there for them otherwise. So that, I think that, that was sort of the basis for a lot of the discussion around increasing the supply.
Absolutely.
And is that an accurate characterization?
I would say so, yes, sir. So how would the commissioners like to move forward here on this? Do you want to go through the concepts one by one, or would you all like to discuss them amongst you and?
I think we've all had an opportunity to study them pretty well, unless somebody has more questions. I'd like to pull, just kind of do a straw poll and get a sense for which way people are leaning. Mr. Curtis?
Mr. Chair, if I could ask one more question on the options. Mr. Meeser, could you, and you did earlier, and I appreciate that earlier, could you please just give me one more explanation on what G, if there was a map that went with it?
Yeah, so what I was just trying to show there is that G could be a possible combination of any of the concepts. But when you look at, like, for instance, on what I put up here, combination of concepts, a half-block of the R4 east of O Avenue changed to commercial. And so that's where I had mentioned that, you know, the commercial zone comes from Commercial Avenue halfway through the block up to O Avenue, and then the rest of it's R4. And so that could be changed and then stop that bonus height at O Avenue, which would be the commercial zone.
Thank you.
So I have, before we do our little straw poll, I have a couple of questions. And regarding the R4 zone, it's been zoned for 40 feet for a number of years, or for a higher, higher construction sizes than the adjoining properties. It probably would have been hard to miss, but apparently some people did not realize that that was the case. But given that that's the current rule for either 40 or 50 feet, if somebody were to redevelop a property, what would be, what would you expect to be the typical options that a developer or a builder would be looking at in the present market?
To maximize full utilization of the property and go with a multi-story building and multi-units.
Some highest and best use, basically?
Yes.
Okay. And one last question. The city paid a lot of money for our housing consultant to work on this housing plan. I understand we also asked them for a recommendation about the R4 bonus height. Could you tell us what that was?
Absolutely. So Makers Architecture is our consultant working on the Housing Action Plan. Their recommendation was to let the moratorium expire and leave the bonus height provisions in place, and staff agrees with that proposal.
Thank you, sir. Okay. I'd like to just see if people are leaning in any particular direction. This is still subject to further review, of course, and input in the public hearing at the next meeting, but as Mr. Meeser said, they would like some direction about where we seem to be headed. Mr. Curtis, would you like to start?
Yeah, I just want to add something before I kind of give you my inclination.
Feel free to provide a rationale for your thinking.
And maybe it will inform subsequent public comment, who knows? But as I read through the stack of written public comment that Mr. Meeser kindly provided to us this evening, there's two examples I want to pull out, but the majority of this pack is a similar theme. And I'll quote from one, "Though we understand that increased density is necessary to meet the housing needs of the community, but..." And that is the theme of a lot of these emails. And the theme, as I generalize, is "Though we understand we have a problem, but..." And I think the "but" is the problem, because we can admire the problem and say, yes, though we appreciate the problem, or though we understand the problem, but... The "but" is the hard work, and the "but" is how we talked about tonight with the matter of supply. Nothing gets better without increased supply. I wasn't here, many of you were, but I trust the work that was done by previous commissions and the consultants, and my inclination is to lean towards option H, was just to move forward.
Thank you. Mr. Milano?
Thank you. I continue to worry that our deficit in housing continues to grow, and how do we address that? Without addressing that issue, values are still going to skyrocket. Affordability is going to move from $700,000 for a house up to $800,000, $900,000 for a house. I've seen that happen in other jurisdictions. So the combination of the deficit that we already are experiencing and the policy of affordability, allowing people who work here to live here, is a critical factor that makes our community a very rich and diverse one. The second issue that I have is that we're being asked to take a look at a multi-year, citizen-driven process, which established essentially a new 15-foot bonus for developers to try and meet our housing goals, 15 feet beyond what is already permitted. Why would we want to overturn, I believe I heard earlier, 75 to 90 public meetings, governor's award for the most extensive citizen outreach? This is a citizen-driven policy, and it's a policy question that the city needs to address. And I believe the way to go about that is that alteration to the policy suggests that it's not working. We don't know if it's really working, because it hasn't been really tried except for a single project yet. So my inclination is, let's allow the policy to continue, let's let it work forward and keep the 15-foot bonus in play.
Mr. Chair, if I may? I misspoke, and I apologize. When I use the letter convention, my preference would be for option F. Thank you.
And mine is also option F.
Mr. Juretsky?
I agree with the staff, let the moratorium go away, and go back to what we initially, we recommended to council and what council approved, and move forward with that.
Dr. Martin?
I'm in agreement with that. The only thing in the back of my mind, could we look at the rooftop deck question? I don't think that that's a major thing. I don't think it's major as far as, you know, whether they're going to be able to rent out the units or not, but it would be major in terms of some neighbors. So that would be my, I would go with F, but I'd take a look at the rooftop provision.
Thank you. I'm going to give a long answer for a short, for a short question. I want to point out a couple of things. Between the comprehensive plan and the development regulation changes, the city spent years doing outreach, public education, and policy analysis, and this policy is one that came out as a result of that. The planning commission, at the time, recommended a policy that was consistent with the comprehensive plan, and the city council approved it. Third, the area that, where the bonus heights were being proposed was already zoned for high density with the intent of providing capacity to meet the goal of increasing the housing supply. So we just spent a bunch of money to hire a housing consultant to get what we already knew, which is, we need more housing. And they have recommended ending the moratorium for the same reason that we've been discussing. I want to remind everybody that this really was a policy decision. It was a change in use. It was part of the development regulations that were being proposed at the time. The planning commission is in a position to only make recommendations. We make our best face efforts to balance the community's needs and the input that we get from the public and the suggestions that we get from the staff. We make our best call. The bottom line, however, is the city council has the authority to make this decision. So those things being said, if the bonus heights were a bad policy, why wouldn't we just eliminate them entirely? You know, if, if the city council was so worried about this, why do they do a moratorium on the fifth floor only for the small units, but not for the, not for the low-income housing units? It doesn't make sense. So I'm, I'm reluctant to look at ideas that divvy up the R4 zone. It looks too much like a spot zone to me, where there's, the whole zone, the whole R4 zone was created to be a dense zone. And so I'm definitely in favor of option F as well.
Well, very well, thank you, commissioners. What staff will work on now is the commissioners' recommendation to city council, and we'll bring that back to the commissioners on January 11th.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Anything else for the good of the order? In that case, we will end the meeting, and thank you all for your participation. We'll revisit this on January 11th, and I'm sure we'll hear some input in the interim. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah. Yeah.